Let's call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask if there's anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing none, if you'd please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free and liberty and justice for all.
We have some special recognitions for you this evening. Dr. Brunel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the first item, as noted in here, labeled Community Service Learning in Action. We had a group of students, I'll name in just a moment, who worked with the National Junior Honor Society Community Service Learning Project and recently delivered over 700 new toys to Boston Children's Hospital Cardiac Unit. So, you can see, it's a little bit dark for you, but just a great effort on behalf of the students. So, Mrs. Dupuy and Mrs. Watson, who run the National Junior Honor Society, went down along with Mr. Gagnon and Ms. Pruney, the art teacher, actually drove them down. But to help with the toy drive, I also want to give recognition to Harvard Pilgrim Healthcare, who made a donation of $500 to that. So, I'll ask you to accept that in a moment. But want to recognize the leads in this effort, being Delia Shea, Caterina Bonos, Lydia Krikorian, Morgan Lucier, Ally McGill, and Isabella Doyle. So, congratulations to all of them, the whole NJHS, for their work. And I do recommend that you accept with gratitude the donation from Harvard Pilgrim of $500.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion to accept with gratitude the donation in the amount of $500 from Harvard Pilgrim Healthcare.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion, comments?
I think this is just so awesome that they were able to help the students out and they did all of that. 700 new toys, that is awesome.
That is great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
And secondly, as recognition, actually, Mr. Gagnon nominated two middle school students. The John F. Kennedy Make a Difference Awards that are honored, are given out annually, based on students for their voluntary service work. So, nominated and having been accepted to receive these honors are Delia Shea. She was chosen for her initiation of the toy drive, as well as Lana Rodriguez, who was chosen for her work initiating a fundraiser for the Second Chance Animal Shelter. So, great recognition for both of them. That actually will take place down at the Kennedy Library on April 12th. So, Mr. Gagnon will be going, the parents will be attending as well, and really a very exciting opportunity for them. So, kudos to the young women.
Great. Any comments?
It's just so awesome, and they're only middle school students. Wait till they're in high school.
Wow.
No, they're doing some great, we have some great kids, that's for sure.
We sure do.
And do we have any citizens' comments this evening? Seeing none, I would now seek the student representatives' report. Ryan, you ready?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, throughout the past couple weeks, we have been very busy at Auburn High in regards to both extracurriculars and regular school day activities. Starting off last Monday, the 26th, the entire school watched the documentary called Screenagers. It's a documentary about cellphone use and what it does to you. The entire school took the message pretty positively, with a lot of students coming back on their cellphone use in class and actually talking to people that are right in front of them rather than texting them. Following that up, the sophomores had MCAS from March 27th to the 29th, starting with the long comp and then their regular English MCAS. On March 29th, the National Honor Society had their induction, where several members from the three grades, sophomores, juniors, seniors, were inducted, and all the seniors were congratulated for performing a great feat of actually graduating as a member of NHS. All of the sports have started to come into full swing with games starting today, I believe. Baseball won their game 20 to 3.
20 to 3?
Yeah.
Feel bad for the other team?
Yeah. Also, so, last Sunday, the 31st, Model UN had their final conference of the weekend. That was at Concord Academy. And today, Humanities Scholars had their event today. I don't know that much about it, but I heard it was at Worcester State. And coming up this weekend is the play, it's Mary Poppins, running Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Great. Thank you for that report. Would you care to tell us a little bit about Screenagers? I'm just curious what your take is on that film.
Yep, sure.
It might be different than my wife's.
Yeah. Screenagers was a documentary about the effects that cellphone use have on the brains as almost an addiction. Message was clear. The actions that were taken in the movie by the parents were a little crazy. They had a four-page contract for their daughter, but the message is still clear that these devices do stuff to us and we should cut down on what it does in whatever ways we can.
So, you found it meaningful?
Yeah.
Did it hit home? Are you one of these people that's always on the phone?
Yeah.
Is that going to change your habits at all?
Uh, somewhat, yeah.
I hate to put you on the spot. I just wanted another perspective. Thank you so much, and thanks for that report. Great, as always. Any comments for Ryan?
Thank you. Was that film for all levels at the school or just a certain targeted group?
Yes, every level of the school watched it at once.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for that. I would now seek approval of the regular meeting minutes of March 21st.
Make a motion to approve the minute from March 21st.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Let me now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, first up this evening, we have Mr. Young and Mr. Burke, who are with us this evening. They are teachers at Auburn High and ski club advisors. And they are here, as you noted in your packet, to seek your approval of a trip to take the ski team next year to Park City, Utah for a skiing trip. Important to note is, if you remember from the calendar, that was approved back in February, that this actually goes right around, there'll be minimal time on a school, both for this trip as well as the Disney trip that you'll review next, because the students will have a half-day of school on the 14th, which is a Thursday. They'll have no school on Friday, which will be a PD day, and then the whole school district will be closed on Monday, the 18th. So, if Mr. Young and Mr. Burke want to maybe go to the podium in case there are any questions from the committee. And while Mr. Young is making his way there, I do just, with regard to Ryan's report, so with Screenagers, Dr. Lozay coordinated this, and this actually came out of the, are you reporting on this?
No.
Okay. Came out of the World Cafe, that parents talked about wanting some information to help their children, help them help their children, to cut down on some of the screen time. So, Dr. Lozay and Mr. Bouvier had found this documentary, it was shown to all of the middle school as well as the high school, and then we had a parent program that evening. So, it's our goal to set up a series of evening and parent programs that we hope to roll out next year, but it was quite well done.
Question, did that just refer to cellphones or also iPads and things like that, too?
All of them.
Screen time.
That's great. All right, welcome.
Thank you.
Sure you want to do this? I don't mean this, I mean take them all.
Well, we've done several weekend trips to Vermont and Maine, and we've had zero problems. So, they were asking if we could go out west, so I said, "Well, I'll see what I can do." I can't make any guarantees, but now that if we actually do get it approved, then we can, hopefully, we can get the kids to come with the money, because it's definitely more pricey than our regular overnight weekend trip.
Oh, absolutely. So, would you like to just give us a little bit of a rundown of what the plan is and where you're flying out or just some things like that?
Sure. Well, the plan is to fly to Boston on Wednesday after school, so there, again, the flights haven't been released, but we, they had flights this year around 5:30 at night. We'd arrive there about 11 o'clock, Salt Lake City time, take a shuttle to the hotel, then on Thursday and Friday, we would basically ski, and then we have activities behind the hotel we can do. And the hotel is close to like a shopping plaza and movie theaters for things to do in the evening. Saturday, we were going to take a break from skiing, and that's where they hosted the 2002 Winter Olympics. So, they have the Olympic facilities there that you can take tours of, they have the ski museum. You can actually, if you want, for a fee, it was pretty expensive, take a bobsled ride down the Olympic course, not with a driver, the students were driving. They have a professional driver that would drive.
Running down the hill.
Yeah. I mean, it's pricey, but, so there are, and there are other activities they have, you know, with the Ola, where they did curling. You could actually try curling if you wanted to go to where they did, you know, those events. And different other Olympic activities, you can watch where the ski jump is trained. They have some zip liners that's supposed to simulate what the ski jumpers actually do. So, and then that would be Saturday, pretty much all day, and then Sunday and Monday, we would return skiing, probably only a half-day on Monday, and then we would fly home, get home about Monday evening, so they'd be ready to go to school on Tuesday.
Of course.
Ensure that they're all in school that next day?
Yes, that, yeah, they understand that. So, I mean, again, depending on flights, I think we'll get back around 11:30 into Boston, so that's probably way earlier than their actual bedtime. So, I'll be asleep.
That sounds great. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Young?
The Chair, I actually do, but this might be more for Marilene than for you. In terms of kids being able to afford this, do we provide help for kids who might, you know, barely be squeaking by to be on the ski club in the first place? And then, I just want to make sure that we have a way for all of our kids to get an opportunity. I mean, this might be their first trip out west, so.
Yes, and they may never, I mean, I don't imagine we'd ever return for another four or five years either, if we have, if this goes smoothly.
Yeah, yeah.
Personally, I plan to do a couple fundraising things. We have done them in the past. Some kids really want them, some kids could take it or leave it, because they, money's not a real issue. But that is, whoops, that is on the agenda to do some sort of fundraising, at least, you know, try to at least get a couple hundred dollars off each kid's bill. I know Mr. Burke's little foundation may help if they ask, maybe, maybe. But as far as the school funds, I don't know.
I just don't know what we've done historically in the past, because this is a great chance for kids to go do something different.
It is. So, through the Chair, typically, the school's operating budget has not supported this, but I will say, it is noted in my evaluation document here, I think the school has a long, the district has a long history of trying to be sure that students are never eliminated from an opportunity due to financial challenges. So, I think, you know, what we'll do is, with all field trips, there is an expectation that kids need to pay. One of the reasons Mr. Young wanted to get this and Mr. Burke approved early is so that they have ample time to do planning, you know, almost a year, to be doing some saving and perhaps raising some monies and fundraisers and things. So, we'll stay in touch with Mr. Young and Mr. Burke and see if there's any way to do that, because we never want a child to miss an opportunity for money only.
Right.
The ski club does have some money in reserves, but not a lot. You know, I don't know the exact number, but it's probably around $2,000 in reserve. So, it could cut in a little bit if we have to, if that's an issue, but not an exorbitant amount of money.
Right.
The only saving grace, I think, is that skiing in and of itself is a rather expensive hobby.
Yes, it is.
And typically, all of the students who are involved in skiing are going to have some money, their family's going to have some money to spend. And then if we were trying to help them out financially, then it's a question of, is it need or is it because mom and dad don't want to pay for this trip? So, you'd have to, there'd be some research involved, but certainly, if we could, if we could help out a little bit here and there for those who might be struggling, but again, it's one of those sports that I think if you've got some skis and you're heading out to the slopes, you've got a few dollars anyway. But I do understand what you're saying, and we always, we're always adamant about that, that we want everyone inclusive in all of our activities, and I totally get that. So.
No, that's a great, have fun. If you need any extra chaperones, I'll let you know.
Yeah, well, right now, I have more chaperones than students.
I'm sure.
What's wrong with that? No problem paying, right?
One-to-one ratio, right? I do have a question. Are any of the chaperones familiar with this area, or is this going to be a new experience for everybody?
I am not. Mr. Burke has skied out west. I don't know if he's skied at this particular mountain. No, but he has skied, you know, Colorado and.
It was the Olympics, right?
And my other question would be, does the mountain have like relations for school groups to come there, or are you totally on your own figuring out what to do and?
No, they have a whole group sales department that I've already been in contact with, and they, you know, they're sending me information, it's like, oh, this is this activity, this is what it costs, I do this particular activity. So, yeah, we've been emailing back and forth, trying to arrange all the finer details. You know, the hotel provides a shuttle for us, complimentary shuttle, back and forth to the ski resort, and so, but they do have, yeah.
We do have a retired Auburn teacher that lives out there and is on ski patrol the whole winter, Bob Pelletier?
Mark Pelletier.
Yeah. Retired math teacher from middle school, and that's one of his homes, and he loves it out there, and he loves the ski patrol, because he always did ski patrol at Wachusett.
Yeah.
He went out there, he does that, so maybe he'll bump into him. I'll tell him to be on the lookout for you.
Hopefully, not if he's on the ski patrol.
If he's on ski patrol, if we bump into him on the lift, that's okay.
You see some Auburn kids go by.
I think it's a great opportunity, and if there's nothing else, I would entertain that motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the Auburn Ski Club trip to Park City, Utah, in March of 2019.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Have fun. Bring back pictures.
Have fun. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and showing up this evening. It means a lot.
You want to vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
All right.
That's it.
Thanks.
Bye, guys. Thank you.
Poor Joe, left alone again.
Do you want to go to Utah or Disney?
And moving on.
So, with the Chair's permission, I'm going to move up, since Mr. Fahey is here, the solar contract. So, just to make you aware, this is actually under the business financial report. As you know, back in the early fall, or maybe even in the late summer, Mr. Fahey came before you, he and Mrs. Worzbicki were investigating potential of putting solar arrays on the middle school and high school roof. They actually looked at all of the schools, but ultimately decided on those. So, Mr. Fahey's here to give a brief update of where we are and seek your approval to move forward.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So, as Dr. Brunel just stated, we looked at, last year, we looked at all of our roofs. We hired a consultant, Bob Patterson, and we figured we all had brand-new roofs, why not put some solar up there? You know, it's best real estate in town. What we determined, what we found out, is that our best option is really the high school and the middle school. Although we have the new roofs in the other buildings, they're not structurally, our buildings are structurally sound, but they meet the, they don't meet the snow load code today's, in today's standard. So, we figured we're just going to leave those buildings alone. So, that being said, we looked out at the middle school and the high school. So, we put an RFP out in September 22nd of last year. All right. We got, 30 people actually looked into the project. We had five responsible bids that came back. We opened them two weeks later. We had, the ranges went from, and I'm going to get into this in a little bit, went from about seven and three-quarters of a cent to 14 cents. So, it's kind of a big range. So, when we did our evaluation, we chose one particular company, ASOLA, and that's who we're going to ask you to let us go into contract negotiations with them. And, but I need to explain to you about the process itself, because when you think about the solar, I mean, I think I even said to you people, it'd be great if we can have a zero electric bill, but anything can happen. Unfortunately, our roof sizes are too small. So, what I mean by that is, over at our middle school, last year, we used 649,000 kilowatts a year, okay? The size of the system that they can put up there wouldn't support that total amount of kilowatts. The system that they're looking at, and this was basically, all the five people had their own proposals to put out there, we're looking at a size of 399,9 kilowatts that could fit up on that roof. So, what does all that mean? So, the simple math is, you take the 39, round it up to 400, okay? So, you've got 400 kilowatts a year that we can get at a reduced rate. So, we're going to get that reduced rate, we're contracting out now, let's just say it's eight and a half cents. So, eight and a half cents for 400,000 kilowatts in front of the meter, okay? So, that means about 250 kilowatts we have to buy out on our own. Now, last year, our business manager went out to bid and successfully got a contract, and we're paying about 15 cents a kilowatt. That's for total, that's what all the adds on down below the meter, what I mean by that is, like, the transportation, the supply, the distribution costs, all that's figured in, that's where you get your 15 cents. So, so for the first 400, we're only paying eight and a half cents out, okay? So, the other, we're paying the 15 cents. So, that's where we, that's where we get our savings. So, a high school, pretty much the same boat. High school, we used over a million kilowatts, right? Same thing. That size of that is like half of that. So, same concept, eight and a half cents for whatever that thing, that the system's built for, and then the remaining, we pay the market rate, okay? Now, this is something that we're locking in for 20 years, and this is a lease program, so we're not, we're not paying anything. So, we're not taking anything out of pocket. So, that's a good thing. So, if anything breaks up there, the company's responsible for it. If we have an increased snow load, which I know is everyone's concern, they're responsible for that, because the faster they get it off, the faster the little hamster turns, okay? So, we get, you get more kilowatt savings. So, that's pretty much how the solar operates. And it's a shame we can't put one twice as big, but unfortunately, we can't. So, who will benefit from it? Our students will benefit from it, our teachers will benefit from it. They will benefit from it, because in the RFP, we put in an educational piece. And that educational piece is going to be a kiosk, there's going to be a screen at both the high school and the middle school, that's going to show the system actually working. Then also, they're going to have, in their classrooms, they're going to have textbooks, coloring books, they'll do projects. That's all spelled out in the proposal to happen. So, that's a good thing, too, because I know that they're, last year, through Mr. Burke, we put up a little mini solar experiment out in the concession stand, and then we're talking about doing a wind turbine over here at the middle school. So, I think it's a great piece for the educational part, because your students will see all that. Students will see it, your parents will see it. The district, so, the district will save approximately between 40,000 and 50,000 a year over the next 20 years. That's a pretty good savings. Now, who else will benefit from it? The town will benefit from it also. The town will benefit from its taxes. So, in other words, the first year roughly, they're going to get like $18,000 in taxes. That will happen for about the first six years. It'll go 18, it'll start to depreciate down to about 7,200. So, so they'll get a little bit off of that, right? Then also, we're part of the green community, and this is another feather in our cap, because we're doing this project with no green community funds. We're awarded each year about a couple hundred thousand dollars when we do projects, and it's something that's determined through, through the town of what projects get done. They like to see, green community likes to see you people thinking outside the box, doing things out on your own. So, this is something that we're doing out on our own, so it's a, it's a good thing. So, they'll benefit from there as well. So, and the best part about it, it's no cost.
Sounds good.
Any way we can save money, exactly.
You question?
Sure.
So, I've been trying to understand all this. So, the company is doing this at no cost to Auburn, and then they get some of this energy that's generated from our solar panels for their own use?
Oh, absolutely.
To sell or what, and that's why they do it?
Yeah, they're in business to make money. So, that's how they make their money. They'll, they'll go out and sell, this is also what they call an S-TRAC system. So, right now, we're in the final stages of an S-TRAC system, so, so in other words, they're benefiting from it, because they don't have to really pay the taxes on it, per se, because it's through the, it's through the town and it's through us, so there's no tax that they have to pay, right? We're the ones that have to absorb that through our profit, okay? So, what they're doing through the S-TRACs is they're selling, they're selling this out. That's how they make their money. They're going to the banks, they're going to the insurance companies, and this ASOLA, yeah, but he's out to make money.
Okay.
But the best part about it, we don't have to pay out money, and there's a guaranteed part in this, in this contract that we're doing, that, let's just say, the system doesn't work at all, we're still guaranteed a percentage for the next 20 years that's spelled out in the contract. So, there's an awful lot involved in this.
Yeah.
That's all I can say.
Sounds complicated, but it sounds like it might be kind of good.
Really, but he's out to make money. There's no question about it.
Yeah. Okay.
Joe, did you, I think you said earlier that if you have snow on these things, they will do it?
Yes.
Or you, we have to do that?
No, it's in, it's in the contract that they'll be responsible for it. If the snow load gets too great.
Yes.
They will be the ones that would come out, and they would contract through me to go up to the roof and to remove the snow.
And you won't have to use your maintenance people to do it?
No, this is clearly, anything, anything that happens with this system, they own it. And that's the beauty of leasing it.
Yeah.
So, if there's a, if there's a leak in the roof, they're responsible for removing this panel to give us access to the roof. So, it's, everything is leased to them of no cost to us. And the beauty of it, after year 15, then we negotiate depreciation value as far as taking that system off of the roof on their dime as well. So.
Maintenance guys got enough to do, they don't need to do that, too.
We do, we got, yeah.
And one more question. What's the track record on this company, then? It's been in business for a period of time, but?
Actually, this, this particular company was recognized through the Solar Magazine of the last year, and won the award for the year. So, they're recognized very well in the industry. They also have over 100 mega panels out there in the state of Massachusetts, and also what they did was they teamed up, and they all do this, they teamed up with another parent company that's been in the business for 117 years. So, they certainly did their homework, they're anxious to get started, we're anxious to get this thing going, and, yeah, so we're all benefit from it.
Did you say 117 years?
That's, yeah.
Was it a window back then?
I don't know what it was. I don't think it was a solar back then. I'm sure it was something, but they teamed up with a.
Magnifying glass? Okay. Well, thanks, thanks for all your work they put into this, Joe, and I know you've been going back and forth quite a bit, and it was, it was quite the process, so.
Yeah.
Appreciate you following up on that. Any other comments or questions before I ask for a motion? All right. I would entertain a motion to recommend to authorize Mr. Fahey and Mrs. Worzbicki to award the solar contract to ASOLA pending successful contract negotiations.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Any further questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, just to echo your comments, I want to give deep appreciation to Mr. Fahey and Mrs. Worzbicki. They've done a tremendous amount of work on this, working with a consultant, reviewing with ASOLA. This is not something that either of them does every day, but certainly, as you can tell by Mr. Fahey, he's quite an expert at this, so, so congratulations to both of them, and thanks for their efforts to help us save money in the district.
I didn't mean to slight you, Cecilia, but you weren't up there with Joe, so I was only giving him the credit.
Joe's done a super job.
I certainly thank you for your efforts as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Couldn't do it without him.
Thanks, Joe. I didn't mean to slight you, Cecilia, but you weren't up there with Joe, so I was only giving him the credit.
Joe's done a super job.
I certainly thank you for your efforts as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Couldn't do it without him.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice night. All right. And back to the superintendent's report.
So the next field trip request out of state is for the marching band to go down to Walt Disney. And this trip has occurred in the past, it has done so very successfully. They too, it will be around that same weekend in March, so it will have very minimal impact on school, and it is my recommendation that you approve it once again.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion to approve the Auburn High School Music Department trip to Walt Disney World, Florida, in March 2019.
Are there any questions or concerns?
I'm not.
Nope. I would just like to say that, again, when I, that last concert that we saw was just amazing, and, and it was kind of the all-school concert, and some of the students that were here presenting to us, and it was kind of an emotional night, they were just, the kids were awesome, they made a great presentation, and to see them on stage performing and how excited they were, and one student in particular, my wife said, "Look at how much that kid is getting into it." And I said, "You should have seen him at the meeting when he presented to us, he is just in love with what he's doing." So, for them to be able to take off to Disney with all their friends and enjoy themselves, it's, it's really something special and something that I fully support. So, all in favor? Oh, we didn't have a second?
Second.
Oh, I opened it up for discussion without a second? Or I just started discussing myself?
Started yourself, Joe.
All right.
That's all right.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
No? All right, I covered it all. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
So wanted to give you an update on the We the People team. Last week, Dr. Lozay, last Monday, and I had the opportunity to go to Auburn High, and we knew about this in advance, having outreach Dr. Martha Pappas. She and two members of the Pappas Foundation came, and the students did a mini version of their, their presentations. They read through their speeches, and other students acted as judges. And then at the conclusion of it, Dr. Pappas told them that she and her foundation would donate five thousand dollars towards their cause. So, just wanted to be sure that you knew about that. As of, and this was as of the writing of this last week, they were at thirty-three thousand dollars towards their fifty thousand dollar goal. I do want to encourage anyone who's available on Friday evening, they're doing a spaghetti supper at Auburn High School prior to Mary Poppins. I believe it's from five to seven. They have a number of baskets that people have donated that you can take chances on or put bids in on, so they're making this final push, and should be a great night. But just the generosity of Dr. Pappas and, and her husband, Dr. Pappas, the late Dr. Pappas, really continues to be amazing, so wanted you to know.
It's great, great having her as a part of our community.
The next item, the Mass Insight Education Sustaining Partnership Program. So we've been participating in this now for a number of years. It used to be MEMZI, the Massachusetts Math and Science Initiative. This is really what the advanced placement program that we have, that our kids take advantage of. So it is my request that you, we continue our involvement in it. It will cost the district up to fifteen thousand dollars. We've planned for that in our budget, and that depends on the number of students that take it and take advantage of the Saturday, Saturday courses, and the MIE will match fund up to ten thousand dollars. So, it's my recommendation that you approve it as noted.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve continuation of participation in the Mass Insight Education Sustaining Partnership Program.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is a vote.
So next year is going to be our year of reviews and audits and all of that fun stuff. So this is another one that we have been made aware of. In addition to the Coordinated Program Review, Dr. Lozay is working hard on, as well as Mrs. Reedy, we've been notified through the Educational Stability Review Program that they're going to come in and look at programs that support students who are homeless, in foster care, and in military families. So, we were just recently apprised of that. As we learn more, we'll certainly share it with you, but I have no doubt that we will do well, as we always do in those.
Are there any specific changes to their protocols or review process since the last time?
Through the chair, I'm not sure if you know that, Dr. Lozay, if there are any changes...
On that particular review, I don't, but on some of the upcoming reviews that we're doing for special education and civil rights, there's some slight changes to it.
But we're up to speed with everything, so it's not going to take a whole lot of adjusting. I didn't think so. Just making sure. Thank you for that.
The next item is the Southern Wester County Educational Collaborative Second Quarterly Report, and as required, it's my recommendation that you accept it. Good things continue to happen there and support students. We have a very small number of students currently attending there, but it's a great opportunity and program for students in our area that belong to the collaborative.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the SWCEC Quarterly Report for the period October to December 2017.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
So I first want to thank Dr. Lozay and Mrs. Worsbicki for working with me on the ABA contract, as well as the guidance that you've provided. I'm very happy to report that after a relatively short number of meetings, we have come to an agreement, and as noted here, they've accepted COLA increases of one and a half percent in year one, one and a half percent in year two, and two percent in year three. Additionally, we made a few little changes to the contract, just giving management the ability to set the hours during the summer, that it would be up to four hours. Also maternity leave, changing that notice from two weeks to two months, and putting in there that they have to provide thirty days' notice for resignations. Not in this contract, but in another, it really caused a problem when there was no language around that. So, I do thank the ABAs, not only for their hard work that they perform every day with our students, but really for the positive engagement that they had with us. It was a very smooth negotiation. So it is my recommendation that you approve it. They've ratified it just this past Friday.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the ABA's contract for the years 2018, 2019, 2019, 2020, and 2020, 21.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'd just like to say thanks on behalf of our board, that they came to the table, and as always, thank them for their hard work and for their negotiating.
Will do, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
And also wanted to make you aware that RH White Construction donated three hundred dollars to the Brenna School to enhance, money to be used to enhance their classroom, so it is my recommendation you accept it with gratitude.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion to accept with gratitude the three hundred dollar donation from RH White Construction Company to Brenna.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote. And we now move on to unfinished business.
So just a reminder, the bus applications are available on the website. Copies have been made available to families in hard copy. As of the twenty-ninth, we have received two hundred sixty-six applications, with them being due on June first. Wanted to let you know, we received, I, we had reported back a couple of meetings ago about a civil rights complaint that had come through, and we had told you at the time that after Dr. Lozay, Mrs. Reedy, and Mr. Bouvier had conferenced with the gentleman from OCR, we were going to agree to just put in writing that we're going to make these changes and, and move forward. Kind of by surprise, we received notification that they were dismissing the claim completely. Basically, what they said was that the person or entity that had made the claim, it was a continuation of a pattern of complaints previously filed, not only in our district, but numerous multiple recipients. So based on that, they dismissed the claims. They did, though, however, still encourage us to make the improvements, which we're already, we're in the process of doing anyway, with the new website. So just wanted you to be aware, it was dropped completely on their part.
Great. That's great, thank you.
The FY nineteen budget, as you know, there are no new updates as of this time, so I would ask you just to approve it now as our official budget, now that we've had the public hearing, based on that recommended motion.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the FY 2019 budget in the amount of twenty-five million eight hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars to be sent forward to the annual town meeting on May first, 2018.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'd just like to thank, thank everyone in town for supporting us as they always do, and supporting our mission to advocate for our children. We have the best, best town around when it comes to supporting our children, so thank you for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
So typically, if you remember from last year, when we set the April twenty-fifth school committee meeting date, it was if needed. My recommendation, since we have an approved budget with the support of town's management, Board of Selectment and Finance Committee, and coupled with the fact that we'll have meetings on May first, May second, and May sixteenth, that if you agree, you could certainly cancel the meeting of April twenty-fifth.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to cancel the school committee meeting scheduled for April twenty-fifth.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
And then as we typically do, to set a meeting on May first, just prior to town meeting at six-thirty, adjourning following town meeting.
Sounds good, I would entertain that motion as well.
I'll make a motion to approve holding the school committee meeting at six-thirty prior to the annual town meeting on Tuesday, May first.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
Mrs. Zottner will get that posted for us. And then finally, we've drafted school committee meeting dates for next school year. As you'll see in your packet, they are very much in keeping with the timelines that we have had in the past, so it is my recommendation that you approve it as written.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the draft schedule for school committee meetings for 2018, 2019.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 This is a vote. And we now move on to new business.
So in your packets, I did, or at your tables, I should say, your seats, the, my self-evaluation regarding the goals that we had put in place, or you had approved, as well as the DESI document. So, I know that Mrs. Zottner left view the actual document. I think the goal is to get the materials back to her by April twentieth, if you're able to do so, and that way, prior to Mr. Page leaving the school committee, you'll be able to complete that process.
There you go. One last parting shot, right, man?
There you go. I wouldn't have it any other way.
So I think, yeah, I think April twentieth gives us plenty of time. Is everyone in agreement?
Oh, yes.
Okay, great.
And in terms of upcoming meetings and events, Community Reading Days, we've had the benefit and complete enjoyment of going to. We've got one more on Friday. Mary Poppins, as Ryan said, is this weekend. Kindergarten screenings are coming up quite soon, and do just want to put a plug in for Chris Heron, who will be coming to the Auburn Public Schools on Monday, April thirtieth. He will do a presentation to the students at Auburn Middle School that afternoon, and then a program that evening, which is free and open to parents in the community at seven. Our goal is to really pack the auditorium. It really was, when we started last time, Dr. Lozay and I, just a riveting program. They just had everybody spelled out by, by what he had to say, and the, the hopeful message that he gave about how he came out of it. But I think it will be very impactful for our students, so look forward to him coming very much.
Any comments, questions? I did see that Chris Heron came to Bay Path, and it was, I wasn't expecting anything, you know, fantastic. He's just another person that has, has some issues, like a lot of people that we know, but it was just, it was moving, he was awesome, and he touched all of the kids, and the very, the, the very few that weren't touched, he made sure that they either were going to listen to what he had to say, or, or they could leave. He was just, he's that type of personality. I mean, anyone who played in the NBA, obviously, can force himself upon you if, if he needs to, so his message was quite clear, and, and it was excellent, and hopefully I can sneak in and see it again. Thank you for that. Thanks for putting that together. And now we move on to teaching and learning. Dr. Lozay.
A few informational items. As Dr. Brunel said, this is the year of the Coordinated Program Reviews. So next year in 2018, nineteen, Auburn will be undergoing officially three reviews, four counting the new one that we're just learning about, around three different programs. The English Learner Program, Special Education and Civil Rights. There have been some slight changes to how they do business. It's usually a six-year cycle, and what they're trying to do for at least the Special Education and the Civil Rights Review is to do a tier monitoring, monitoring type of program where they do select, select indicators each year, as opposed to doing maybe fifty indicators. The first year, they'll look at maybe twenty-five indicators, and then the following year, the other twenty-five, so that the district is not as burdened by how much information they have to share. This year, though, is just the self-assessment year, which means we have to upload and provide some documentation for them to review, with next year being the onsite visits. Actually, if the documents that we upload are really impressive, the site visits may be fewer in number. So we're shooting for, of course, the high bar. We need to submit that by May fifteenth, and Mrs. Reedy and I are working hard on that, and as we progress through the process, we'll keep you updated with that. The K-5 Science Curriculum Committee, that's been meeting monthly over the course of this past year, has pretty much narrowed it down to two different programs. It's Pearson's Elevate Science, or McGraw-Hill's Inspire Science. One is actually currently completing its publication, so it's brand, brand new. We are trying to look at some area districts so we can go out and observe it in action, talk to some teachers about how the implementation went. One of those districts is Drakeett, so it might be a little bit of a travel, but it might be worth it, and we hope to bring a decision by May to the committee. More news out of the state is that beginning this fall in 2018, they'll be implementing a revised state accountability system. If you recall, the old system, it talked a lot about closing achievement gaps, and it awarded levels to our different schools and to our districts. So this new system is going to have a very specific focus on raising the performance of our lowest achieving stu, students, specifically by name, and, and creating targets for each of those students in terms of growth that they need to make. So that will be a very interesting approach. They are going to replace the levels one to five, and those will be replaced with not-meeting targets, partially-meeting targets, meeting targets, or at the high end, schools of recognition. So there's a lot of changes in there. They're also looking at the secondary level, instead of just looking at achievement and growth and English proficiency, to try to add some other indicators that show that we offer good opportunities for our students. So at the secondary level, we could get additional points for having dual enrollment, which we do have, AP courses, and also for bringing students back into the schools to graduate those students that had dropped out. So I think we're in a good place for this new system with those additional indicators. It's presently up for public comment, and so by the spring, the end of spring 2017, they will formally adopt it or make whatever additional changes they need, and we will be implementing it in 2018, and I'll come back with more details as we gather.
Not to put you on the spot, Dr. Lozay, but as they changed the, the names of the ratings, and basically just took the number out and, and put a title in there, do you feel like it's still going to be our students who struggle the most that may cause us to get that lower rating? Or are they just looking to improve on what we do for those students who struggle the most? Is it, and not going to affect the rating? Because it's always been the struggle to show that growth, and is it, you think it's still going to be the same way, just with a new face?
Personally, I haven't seen enough of it to really answer that thoroughly, but my feeling and my sense from the one training that we went to, I actually think it's going to be a better system, personally. I think it's going to really target kids, look at where they are, create targets for each student so we can individualize. I actually think it'll be a better way to go.
Great. Look forward to hearing more.
It'd be good if it showed individual growth like that.
Right.
Now, is this something that, that they talked about at the Cape? Because I don't recall seeing...
No. We went to a DESI presentation out in Marlboro.
Okay.
The superintendent's.
Very recently, actually.
Right? Maybe a month ago. So more will be coming, probably because they're waiting for the final adoption, that they haven't shared as much.
Yeah.
Gives us a preliminary view.
Well, thank you for that, I look forward to hearing more as it rolls out. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none?
So as we all felt that nice warm weather last weekend, forget this week, but we're thinking about summer, of course, so we are still planning to offer several different programs this summer. The Extended School Year, ESY program that you hear us talk about, will be offered again this year. That is offered to those students who are identified as needing that summer support through their IEP process, so that's more of a special education-type program. That program actually runs for five weeks, it's four days a week, Monday through Thursday, it's three and a half hours, and those dates are from July 9th to August 9th. We'll also be offering, once again, our Title I Remedial Summer Program for students in grades one to eight, and that is by invitation, students have to qualify for that as well. That's only a four-week program, three hours a day, Monday through Thursday, and those dates are July 9th through August 2nd. And as you know, we began a new K-Transition Program about two summers ago, where we had pre-K students come in and spend just two weeks with us to kind of get rid, used to some of the routines of kindergarten, and that was so successful that we're planning to expand that to three weeks, and also try to take in twice as many students this summer, so we're looking forward to that. We have two other camps that we run, Camp Invention, which is an outside organization who hires our own staff and has their own curriculum, that's for students in grades one to six, that's only a week-long program, that will run August 6th through the 10th, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 3:00. And finally, we don't want to forget that we offer our own STEM camp for students in grade six through eight, run by Karen Loach from the middle school, that will run July 16th to the 20th, for five full days, again, 8:30 to 3:00. So we plan to send out those flyers and student invitations very soon. Maybe that will bring the warm weather.
I hope so.
I hope so, too. So we've had the School Day Special Olympics for the past two or three years, so again, this year it will be hosted at Leicester High School, it will be on May 18th. Special Olympic athletes aged six to 22 are invited to this event. We usually bus our students there, and we usually have about 40 participants at a tent, it's quite a moving day. They have events such as running, wheelchair races, they do relay races, they throw beanbags, and footballs, and softballs, and footballs, they have jump ropes and long jumps, and it's just amazing to see these students out there giving it their all, and one of my favorites is the mini obstacle course at the end, so I would encourage anyone who can to stop by, because you'll leave there in a very uplifted mood. And just finally, to make you aware, that this past Monday, April 2nd, we celebrated Autism Awareness Day, we asked all our staff and students to wear blue, and I happened to be reading in a kindergarten class that day, and it was a sea of blue, so it made me really proud of our students, they're all great kids, but they also support each other, so I thought that was very impressive.
Excellent.
And that is that.
Thank you for that report. Now for everyone's favorite time of the evening. Cecilia?
Okay, good evening. In your packet, I provided you with a year-to-date budget report, it's dated March 29th, along with the budget transfer document, listing the transfers within and between series. I'd be happy to answer any questions on either, and I look for your approval of the budget transfers.
Any questions or comments, Miss Cecilia? I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the budget transfers between series as presented by the business manager.
Do I have...
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
I have included in your packet also a listing of each of the schools and their student activity accounts. If you look, I've broken it down by schools. Bryn Mawr, Packer Chalk, and Swanson Road, each have general activities funds, but if you look at the middle school and the high school, they each have various sub-accounts, which I've listed for you. I would like to seek your approval of these as listed, for their existence, approved by the school committee.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the listing of student activities accounts.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
Okay, and I will bring these back on a yearly basis to keep you updated on what actual sub-accounts are listed in the middle school and the high school. Thank you very much, and that's my report.
That was it?
Thank you, short and sweet.
Wow, that was a short one. We now move on to policies.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So for your second reading and final approval is policy DIBA, Special Education Stabilization Fund, and it is my recommendation that you do so.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the DIBA Special Education Stabilization Fund on second reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
The remaining policies in your packet, actually, the following five policies, AC, GBA, GCF, JB, and JFBB, these have been reviewed and based on recommendation from MAS-C due to the Pregnancy Fairness Act, modifications have been made to them, so it is my recommendation that you approve those five policies as amended.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the five...
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
The next packet of ones, these are ones that we have just been reviewing, Dr. Lozay actually did these as their curriculum related, some of them have no changes to them, and others have minimal, but it is our recommendation that you approve them as noted.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the above named policies as presented, IA, IGA, IGBH, IGD, and IHAMA.
Nicely done, Gil. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote. And we do need an executive session, so I would entertain that motion.
I would like to make a motion to go into an executive session for Master of Law, Chapter 30, Section 2182, to send up strategies for negotiations with union and union of students.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Local vote.
Mrs. Hawke?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Scobie?
Yes.
Good night, everyone.[1782.13][1782.13][music]